Hello and good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, May 31st, 2016. It is roughly 7:00 PM. We will be beginning a special session of council this evening. And prior to starting, I'll just remind everyone on council as well as members of the audience that to go ahead and mute your phone or put them on quiet mode helps make things run a little smoother. Thank you. I will then proceed to establish a quorum. Looks like all members of council are here this evening. President Nysel is not with us this evening, hence I am sitting in as President Protem. I will also be presenting ordinances and voting on them. So, quorum's established. Moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 6416 is an ordinance authorizing funds for the purchase of fire extinguishers through a Walmart community grant. And this is introduced by Councilmember Butler. This particular ordinance, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion for the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This particular ordinance is for the amount of $1,500, a community grant award which we were given by Walmart. Our fire chief applied for it and we were successful in receiving it. And the mayor's office plans on using this for the purchase of fire extinguishers. Any comments on the ordinance? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 6516, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a lease agreement for solar-powered recycling refuse compacting containers in the Uptown area. Introduced by Councilmember Butler. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance. This ordinance we discussed in committee meeting as well, and we had a presentation from Big Belly, which is a company out east that discussed in detail what the particular, this type of mechanism does. It is for a $50,000 lease option here is what we would be moving into. And this would be money coming from the garbage fund. Something that, in regard to this particular agreement, this would, I think, alleviate a number of garbage cans from the Uptown Court Street area. So, we would be removing a number of them and having actually less containers uptown. And this would also offer recycling because there's currently no presence of recycling on Court Street as far as walk up and using. So, I do know we have some comments from the community. Are there any from council or the mayor's office?
I do.
Yes, councilmember.
I know that several people have discussed this with me. I'd like to point out that sometimes it seems like you're spending a lot of money, but at the same time, when you look at this and other cities that have followed this model, you tend to save a lot of money over the contract life. And you save money by reducing the amount of garbage pickups, which will reduce the amount of costs for those garbage pickups. And increasing recycling also saves us money because we have less landfill tipping fees. And also, the amount of litter and stuff that goes flying through the air because our current system is a little on the nasty side would also save because we don't have to have the litter control officer going out and figuring out whose garbage is what. And so, I think that sometimes, as somebody said to me, sometimes you spend money to save money.
Counselmember Pappy.
I would add to what Member Falls said. I've been on many committees over the last 12 to 15 years regarding beautification efforts. And one of the biggest issues that comes back to us all the time is how can we keep our Uptown area looking clean? So, one of the issues years ago was to get the daily trash haul off the street. It used to be that if you drove down the street from midnight to 6:00 or 7:00 AM, everybody had their trash out at the sidewalk. That caused many problems. We finally got that moved to sites behind the buildings where it's now picked up. And that improved some, but we still have the issue of people overflowing trash cans. And as anybody knows, we've tried to clean those litter receptacles and it's very difficult to clean them. And our litter control officer last summer did that. It was a very time-consuming job, but because of the fact people put all types of litter, liquids, all kinds of things, it's just very unsightly. So, one of my goals with this type of legislation and this type of lease agreement is that we improve all of that in the Uptown area, not just the recycling, which of course we need, but that we also, it's more cleanly than it has been.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments from council? Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President. I always find myself in a difficult spot when I call myself an environmentalist and then find myself opposing a motion that is, or an ordinance that is sponsored to clean things up and be better for recycling. I oppose this, I oppose it on two grounds. One is I'm not sure whether we have enough information to really make a sensible decision at this point in time. From my understanding, we are entering into an agreement that would be for a one-year lease, and I'm not sure if that's the agreement, but we're paying $50,000 to lease this for a year. The question is, is this an open-ended contract? Are we committed to any period of time? Which I don't have the answer to that. So, I'm concerned about that. The other thing I'm concerned about is that there are so many cheaper ways to do this. And I realize there are concerns about keeping the trash cans clean and things like that. I can't tell you how many times I've walked past trash cans and they don't have any kind of bag in them at all. So, perhaps maybe having somebody actually monitoring the trash cans might be a way to do it. When I eat lunch down at Baker Center, I'm amazed at the fact that they have the tops to the trash cans for both recyclable containers and the trash cans to stop people from cramming stuff into it. Seems to me that this same thing could be done for a few thousand dollars on a regular permanent basis. I'm also concerned about the fact that we are told that we will save so much money by not having the garbage truck come by and picking up this stuff on a regular basis. And yet, we've been told at the same time that there's, they still have to come and pick up the garbage from the Uptown deposits anyway on a regular basis. If you really want to do something for recycling in this town, then why don't we require all businesses to recycle? Why don't we require the apartment complexes to recycle? I get comments on a regular basis from students who are living in the apartment complexes and they want to recycle, and they're not given that opportunity. But instead, we're spending loads of money for various things which are, you know, how could I term it, them other than luxuries, which I'm not paying for. So, I'm opposed to it. I'm not opposed to it in principle. I would like to see Athens beautified. I just think it's an excessive expense and I would hope that other members of council may consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Cochran.
I appreciate Member McGee's points about other ways that we can promote recycling in multi-unit apartment complexes and whatnot. But I do support this issue because I think that not only is it a way to help make Athens a place that people want to live because our Uptown area is vibrant, we're fortunate to have that vibrant Uptown area with lots of businesses that people go eat at and produce litter from. And so, not only will this help make Athens a place people want to live, but a place people want to visit. And we often hear that alumni come back and they're embarrassed about seeing the trash, you know, Uptown spilling out of trash cans or after, you know, homecoming and things like that. And so, I do think that this will certainly help us with our litter issues with blown trash, wet trash, stinky trash cans. You know, the one out in front of Witz is notoriously noxious. So, I think that having these will certainly help promote Athens as a destination where we know how to deal with trash. So, let's put it in the Big Belly, sure.
Thank you. Yeah?
Yes.
Member Cottes.
Thank you, President Protem. So, when I first started looking at this, you know, to me, $50,000 is a lot of money. So, I was able to get from the auditor a spreadsheet that kind of looks at the garbage fund, I think from like 2006 or 2007. And I was able, and that's where I can live. I can live in those balance sheets and I can watch, you know, look at the numbers and understand and kind of get a better grasp. This isn't going to break us. It's $50,000. It's one year if it doesn't work. And so far, the track record from these things is that they do work. So, I don't think that we're a city that's different than any other city that's employing this type of technology. You know, really, I don't have an issue with it. The only caution that I do have is, two points here. One is, well, only one caution though. The caution is that these machines do collect a lot of data. And sometimes when you get these new technologies, I've seen when I've introduced new things into my business, you don't really take the data and do much with it. So, if there's somebody that has purpose to kind of monitor and figure out how to do that, we can utilize this technology a little bit better and actually probably accelerate the cost advantages to it if we have someone designated to be like, this is your job and this is what you're good at and this is what you're going to do. That has to be figured out, whose job duty would be required of that. The second thing is, in business, really, you only have one time to make a good first impression. And that happens usually before the person walks into your business. So, if there's trash blowing around in front of your business, there's probably a good chance that your business is going to, they're going to make a decision about your business before you even walk in. So, I like it. I think this is a benefit for residents, for the people that work uptown and are invested uptown.
Thank you, councilmember. Any more comments from council? Does Mayor's Office have any information in regard to questions or comments from?
I do. I have a few things, and I'm glad that Member Cottes mentioned the city auditor providing information. She did. She provided not just a year's worth of information, she provided 10. She went back to 2006, so you can easily look at the trends of the 760, the garbage fund. But he also, I want you to know that, you know, the administration's been working hard on this and trying to come up with a solution for Court Street in the Uptown area. There's 58 open trash cans in the Uptown area in totality. And something that is interesting to throw, to put out there is that under the current contract for picking up the litter inside of these cans, it's Monday through Saturday, seven days, or six days a week that that's done, and it's 75 cents per can. Ron crunched some numbers, our deputy service safety director, crunched some numbers, and there's actually, I'll cut to the chase with this rather than belabor all this math. It's pretty straightforward stuff. But with our current street cans, current trash cans, in comparison to having Big Belly, 24 Big Belly units, and we would still have to have six of the old trash cans out there. But using that 75 cents per day, per can, and it drawn back to what we have now, what we're looking at, is a cost savings of $8,319 a year with going to Big Belly. So, we're actually saving money with Big Belly rather than maintaining our old tired, rolling out trash, trash cans up and down Court Street. The other thing I want to point out, this is a service, this is essentially a service contract with this particular kind of lease. I believe it's a three-year lease, $50,000 a year moving forward. And a couple of things with that. Is at the end of the three years, if we find out these just aren't working for us, I can't fathom that that were the case, then we could terminate the contract. They come and pick up their cans and we go back to the old ones or something else. I think that would be a wrong move, but it is what it is. The other thing with this, with the service contract is that with these particular trash cans, maintenance is part of that package, software upgrades is part of that package. So, every software upgrade that comes with a monitoring system that detects when these cans are full, when they need to be emptied, where we're at, what percentage which cans get used more than other ones, any new upgrades with that computer software upgrade, it's part of it. So, it's not costing us anything extra. They come in, it's part of the agreement, and we keep rolling forward. It will lead to fewer collection days, these trash cans, in comparison. I look at it this way, rather than it just being a 75 cents per pickup issue. I look at it at carbon emissions, when I'm looking at the trucks that are driving down the street every day and stopping to get the trash out of each one of these cans and idling, as opposed to, not to be confused with the trash pickup that's going on at our recycling franchises where that's going on too in the Uptown area. These are for the trash cans on the street. I see that as being an environmentally prudent thing to do as well. One last point, then I'll turn this over to anyone in the public who would like to speak tonight. I was looking at the revenue, and one of the things that really jumped out at me is when you look at the recycling support fees and the service charges which fall into revenue under the 760 fund, they have slow growth over time. They aren't just these huge jumps or anything. As a matter of fact, I would go so far as to say, over the past three years, it's really kind of been flat in terms of any revenue growth in those two. The one I would like council to pay attention to, which is interesting, is the trash ticketing. There's been a huge jump in that alone with our litter control officer, where it's gone from in 2006, about $6,000 annually, up to $86,000 in 2015. That's money that goes into the trash fund. That $86,000 a year could fund this program if it were to make, I hope it doesn't, but, you know, just for that level of enforcement throughout the rest of the city when it comes to litter control is essentially half of what we'll be paying for Big Belly if we move forward with this. So, again, I'm going to stop talking because you guys all know how I feel about this. I think this is the right way to go. I think, I can't remember who said this, and I allowed you for saying it, you only get one first impression when people come to the city of Athens. And if they see that on the street alone, we're recycling on our major pedestrian throughfare with retailers and whatnot, you know, it speaks volumes. I too am not a huge fan. I do tend to plug my nose and walk quickly across Court and Union at a particular intersection, but I think a Big Belly will help rectify that particular issue as it will rectify a lot of issues in the city of Athens.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Protem.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Mayor. I think we have another comment from Councilmember Pappy.
And are we going to recycle the cans that we're taking off to maybe other places in our parks? They are still in pretty good use, some of them are. And recycle them to the bike trail and different places where we regularly have people going to empty?
We could certainly do that.
I mean, we've got 58 of them, so.
We could either do that, repurpose them, or we could recycle them. They aren't made out of metal.
Yeah.
I know they are quite costly because on the Clean Committee, we have looked at the prices, and one of the reasons why we never went forward with, they are quite costly.
Thank you. Who, there's potential questions or comments from the community? If you'd like to, three minutes if you'd like to speak on this ordinance. Roughly three minutes. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Caleb Brown. While I fully support the idea of adding recycling receptacles to the Uptown Waste Management System, I feel like it might be irresponsible for the city to lease instead of buying the containers. And so, I did a little bit of research and wanted to share some information that I found with you. I did watch the April 11th presentation from Big Belly at the City Safety Service Committee meeting, so I'm familiar with the kinds of automated systems that council has in mind. I've also spoken with a number of citizens about the solar-powered recycling bins over the past few weeks, and while I've heard a lot of really good reasons why it could be good for the city, I've also heard a lot of confusion, especially about why we want to lease instead of buy. Big Belly's answer is that we get serviced with the lease. But do we really need the service? The thoughts of pretty much all the citizens I've spoken with mirrored my own first impression. Why don't we just buy the waste receptacles outright? So, I did some research, made some phone calls, and spoke with some sales representatives on the phone. I was quoted prices per receptacle ranging from about $300 to $1,500 each. And I got a price quote from one company for 25 new high-end recycling receptacles that look very similar to the kinds of trash cans that we already have and would fit nicely together, and was quoted $35,000 to just purchase 25 recycling bins. And even factoring the cost for the city to install them, that would be a lot cheaper than the $50,000 from the Big Belly. And I've also been curious, you're talking about, you're not sure if you want to do this in the long run. If we take out our trash cans from Uptown and then we decide we don't want Big Belly, do we have to buy more trash cans later? And if that's going to be the thing that happens eventually, maybe we should just buy them right now. Also, if we need to spend $50,000 a year to make sure the trash and recycling containers are emptied before they overflow, there's plenty of money to create a new salaried position for someone to walk around and check them or something. I don't know. I mean, you've already talked about a lot of stuff like this. But, and it seems like that for about the same price or less than a lease from Big Belly, City of Athens could simply purchase its own recycling receptacles. And if the management of pickup times is problematic, there should be plenty of extra money to create a new salaried position to handle it, and that person could spend their money in the local economy. There might even be a local fabricator that could produce the trash and recycling receptacles for the city and keep even more money in the region. So, my opinion and the opinion of many other citizens is that the lease from Big Belly doesn't exactly make sense right now, and that the loss of opportunity for the local economy would be a terrible thing to do if we could maybe do it in a way that could keep the money around here. And I urge City Council to vote against this proposal and instead consider other options for public recycling in Uptown Athens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is David Hurd, November 4th, this weekend. I got the idea. Do the recycling, do the education, and you won't have to raise a 10-cent plastic bag fee. That would be better for us. Get the recycling stuff and not, educate people on recycling, but don't charge a 10-cent plastic bag, paper bag fee because that hurts the poor families in the area, and you don't want to hurt the poor families in the area and people with disabilities. So, the mayor just came up with the perfect solution. Education, new garbage cans. But my solution is, don't put 10-cent fee on the plastic bags or paper.
Thank you. Any more comments? Any more comments or questions from council or the mayor's office? Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the ordinance. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 6516, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion, the ordinance is passed 6 to 1. Does that sound right? Thank you, everyone. Moving on to ordinance 6816, an ordinance to provide for an increase in the general city income tax at 20 hundredths percent per annum beginning January 1st, 2017, authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 8th, 2016. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Who will be speaking on this?
I shall.
Thank you.
Well, this is the third reading of this ordinance, and I will make a motion therefore to adopt 6816.
Second.
We've discussed it, you've read it. The title here says everything you need to know about it, what this is doing, and I want to emphasize this. Council is authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 8th, 2016. That's what this ordinance will do. We are not, as a body, raising taxes. We are giving it to the people to decide if they want to raise taxes on themselves, which is what we've been doing since 1776. So, let's continue the tradition.
Thank you, councilmember. Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Just as a reminder to the public, we would be putting on the ballot from, the last time we raised taxes was what year, and we are going from what to what?
Well, we can look at the, from my memory, we are going from what we have presently is 1.65% to 1.85. It's a .20% increase. So...
And the last time we raised taxes?
How was it, '85?
1986.
'86, darn it.
1986, there were two years between 1986 and now where there was a one-year bump, but those were for special projects, special needs, and then it went back down to 1.65. On both those occasions, I believe it went to 1.75 for, like I said, particular projects, but then it sunsetted at the end of that year.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Mayor?
I've provided council, again, with a map, one that Deputy Service Safety Director languished over. Spent a lot of time putting this together. It was something I wanted council to be able to see. I'd like the citizens that, you know, will have an opportunity to see this as we roll this forward, but it has to do with land acquisition. It really has to do with the growth of the city of Athens. And since 1988 up through the present, you can see that in terms of acreage, the city of Athens has grown extensively. It's grown by more than 33%. So, we've increased our size by a third in that time. It's also worth pointing out that that hasn't necessarily been growth in residential neighborhoods. It has in some areas been business-related, but there's also some large areas where the annexation of the Ridge's property, which, you know, has little, or no residence, and as well as little or no business that takes place up there, other than OUs properties, it is pretty much OUs property. So, I want that, people to digest that as well. But when you think about those, you should also be thinking about the fact that in terms of city services that need to be provided to those areas, you know, our fire department hasn't grown exponentially to keep pace with the increase in acreage alone in the city of Athens, nor has our police department. Yet, our police department continues to have to patrol up through all incorporated areas in the city, as do we have to provide fire protection, water, and sewer as well. So, we've got not only services, but we have our infrastructure and utilities that we need to get out to these areas as well. So, I wanted that to be shared. The other thing that I want to share with council, if I may, and I'll tell you this just briefly, but I think this is also important. I asked my police chief as well as fire chief to give me a sense since 1986, or actually, I just said since 2006, 2006 to the present, if I could get some sense of just equipment. I'm talking about just their own personal equipment that is, you know, the city purchases annually and for new firefighters and new police officers, their initial gear. And if you, most of the items, I'm just looking through these, and I'm not, I'm going to... And if you, most of the items, I'm just looking through these, and I'm not, I'm going to try to generalize rather than try to read through them, I'm not going to read through these item by item, but we're looking at, in most cases, a doubling in the cost of protective equipment and the turnout gear for the fire department that they have to use when they're rolling on scene, as well as the police cruisers, just a base model in 2006 to what it is to today, has increased by about a third in cost. But the cruiser is relatively inexpensive in comparison to all the gear that goes into that cruiser to make it an effective police cruiser. Those prices, because a lot of it is electronics, a lot of it is radio equipment, those prices have gone up significantly in a 10-year span of time, and we're, you know, we're keeping pace but barely. We're, you know, where we're struggling is getting the opportunity to get out ahead when it comes to equipment, capital improvements, infrastructure repair and upgrades, not only to the asphalt itself, but to water lines and sewer. One last item on here, because it's in front of me, is to give you guys a sense, this is where we've done some great partnering, but even the partnering with the higher university in terms of cost share for some of our fire equipment is helpful. But we're talking about pumper trucks, a 2003 pumper truck, $360,000. That same pumper truck in 2013, these are actual dollar amounts, because these are the most two relevant replacements that we've had, is $564,000. So the prices of those have gone up. It's great, and I allowed higher university for the contributions that they do make. Just as a refresher, it's $50,000 a year. They have just allowed that to roll forward for another five years. But the trucks themselves are still crazy expensive for us to stay out ahead of those to keep our firefighters and our police officers, our lands and building crews, our EPW crews with equipment that's not just functional, but is allowing them to get the jobs done that they need to get done. So again, this .2 percent increase will allow for us to pick more streets. I've mentioned this before, I'll mention it again, the price of asphalt has gone, has doubled in the past 10 years. That really dictates, and then you include the contract solos for the labor that goes into putting these down, you know, we've seen a truncation of the amount of streets that we can get done because we're stretching those same dollars, you know, thinner and thinner across streets that, let's be honest, they're not improving with age, they're becoming worse with age, but we're doing the best that we can to get out there, and at times it feels like we're doing patchwork, as opposed to really getting out ahead by being able to effectively use an income tax like this to get out there and continually improve larger slots of city streets, sewer, water.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, councilmember.
Some people have said, well, why do we annex? Why do we annex property? And we shouldn't be annexing property if this is going to be what? I think that this nice graphic shows that we, as council today, are dealing with a lot of past decisions that were made for whatever reasons they were made. I mean, 2006, when the discussion about the University Estates, that it was going to be this huge, big development that was going to have all sorts of business development and golf courses and this sort of thing, and so it wasn't seen as being kind of a drain on services. Some of the ones that we have annexed, like Holzer, was to provide services for a business. So there's all sorts of reasons why we annex property, and it's not necessarily always bad due to, in terms of city services. So I think that we, as the council of today, are dealing with a lot of past decisions that councils have been doing over the last 25, 30 years. And also, I think that you also, we have talked about the increase in students that have occurred. And just the number of feet walking down a street and the amount of trucks that have to, you know, deal with their garbage and all these sort of things puts wear and tear on the city. And so I think that we, and the university has come forward with some funding, and so I think that at the state, we have done really well. Whenever we talk about getting rid of a truck, it's usually 25 years old. And so I think the city has been really good at using baling line, you know, baling twine and duct tape to keep things together, but at one point, that's not helping the citizens of Athens to keep the services where it needs to happen, because if you don't have services that are top-notch, you don't have businesses that want to come in and relocate and those sort of things. So it doesn't, it's not smart to just kind of try to keep things running along on a lower level when we have to compete with a lot of other communities.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll briefly acknowledge, too, that I've witnessed this body not give itself raises during fiscal difficult times as well, and I've seen other administrators support that too. Knowing that the state is also sending us less money or that there's less assistance from them and that we need to become more independent and self-sufficient, it just, to me, makes prudent sense to put this on the ballot for the voters and hopefully they will consider supporting it. Any comments from the community, citizens? Okay, we do have a motion and a second for ordinance 6816. If there's no further comments, all those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7016, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Again, this is the third reading. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 7016.
Second.
It's been discussed, but I'll just briefly go over what the appropriation ordinance will amend. It will amend the 2016 appropriation ordinance of 1/2015, $15,000 to the general funds, lands, and buildings, $3,000 for city building roof repairs, $1,000 for HVAC upgrades to serve the front conference room, treasurer's office, IT server room of first floor of the city building, $18,000 general fund for professional services to cover employees' absence, $500 general fund for purchase of toolset, and $60,000 to garbage fund for second solid waste control inspector and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. Section 2, the ordinance 1/2015, is further amended by decreasing general fund police by $22,500 and increasing TC500 by same amount for purchase of an unmarked crime investigation unit vehicle, and a new upgrade of SAM equipment and increasing the total appropriations by set amount.
Thank you, councilmember. Any questions or comments from council? Comments from the mayor's office? Public? Okay, we have a motion and a second for ordinance 68, I'm sorry, for ordinance 7016. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7216, an ordinance amending certain sections of the fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens, and this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
I'll speak to it.
Thank you, member Reisner.
I move to be adopt 7216.
Second.
It's a very short ordinance, but essentially, I'll just read it. Effective July 1st, 2016, section 16 military leave, section 20 promotion, lateral transfer, and demotion of current employees, and section 21 compensation are hereby amended as attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. What this will do is allow the city to increase the amount of military leave time for those of our employees who are actively involved with our National Guard or the reserves when they're called up by, for whatever reason, to go somewhere to do something in terms of the military. State law allows us 21 days, which we currently give, but because they're being called up more and more and more of our employees are out longer, we're increasing it to 30 days. So yesterday being Memorial Day, I think this is rather appropriate.
Thank you, member Reisner. Any questions or comments? None from the mayor's office. Any from the community? Okay, we have a motion and a second for ordinance 7216. Those in favor of the ordinance adopting it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. We're now moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 7116, an ordinance authorizing a new non-union compensation plan and associated staffing levels, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. I believe member Reisner was going to address this.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that we are under a time limit here. This has to take effect by the first pay period of July. We are running up against our July recess. Last week, we had to make an amendment, which brought it back to a, instead of tonight being a third reading, last week turned it back to a first reading. Now we're at a second reading. I therefore would like to have the rules suspended, and we vote on it tonight.
Thank you, member Reisner. So we do have a motion for suspension only and a second. Any discussion on suspension here?
Just a clarifying question, since this is not yet June, don't we still have time to do a third reading on this? It takes 30 days to go into effect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Claire. So voting on just suspension only, all those in favor of suspending the rules for this particular ordinance, 7116, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Is under suspension. Mr. Reisner.
Well, okay, I make a motion that we adopt 7116.
Second.
The reason for its adoption is our employees deserve this thing. The non-union employees deserve at least close to equality with their federal employees who are in bargaining units. We've been involved with this plan for over nine months. It's not perfect. It still doesn't give them up to what some of the union bargaining units are doing for their employees, but at least we're getting closer, and by God, it's time to get this thing done. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Thank you, councilmember Reisner. Other questions or comments from council? Councilmember McGee.
I find myself opposed to doing it at this point in time. I support a raise for the non-union employees. I think it's needed, but I do have some concerns over certain aspects, and I'm not sure that we've really addressed all of the aspects. I had looked over Kathy Heck's email that was on May 20th. I'm not sure whether that's been addressed at all, some of the issues. All I see is, instead of waiting forever, I see us rushing into this, and I'm not sure that anyone really understands what it entails, other than certain people are getting raises, we're getting new salary upgrades, but it seems like there's a little bit more to it, and I'd like to understand it. So again, I am absolutely supportive of granting raises to our employees, the city employees. I think it's time to do it, but I just don't think that we've been provided with the information, and to suddenly say it's going to take place in July, so we have to suspend the rules to rush into it, I think is backwards reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Member McGee, I'm just, what, is there something specific that concerns you? We know the 30 days that it has to be passed, but is there something more specific? It seems like there have been quite a few emails back and forth with Human Resources and Auditor Heck to try to help explain some questions.
I think the last thing that concerned me was the issue that Auditor Heck had raised was the issue of certain pay, how is it phrased, as lump-sum payments, I believe it was, as of January, someone would receive a lump-sum payment. I'm concerned with that, and I am concerned primarily because as a manager of an office building, I've had experienced that in our office. We gave all of our employees a $3,000 raise at the start of the year as a token of good faith and saying that they deserved it, and within a month, one of those employees left us, and it was a very important employee, that she might have stayed if we had not given that raise at that time, so there would have been incentives. So I'm concerned with little things like tweaking that, and I'm not sure that I understand everything that the ordinance is proposing at this point in time, and without understanding that, I, again, I'm surprised that we're rushing it through at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul.
I think this is one of the times where we have, because of the different times that one came on council, we have been talking about this, and so maybe it's on us that we haven't educated the new members quite as much. But we have talked about this for months, and we've had outside consultants come and give a huge amount of presentations and the paper, the amount of paper that we have seen on this. And being a member of the Finance and Personnel Committee, to tell you, we have, if we talk about this anymore, it's just, the issues, I think, have been, nothing is going to be perfect. You can never get to perfect when you're coming to a policy and legislation. And this is about as good as we're going to get with being competitive, and this is like a marketplace competitive process that we need to do. And one thing that past councils have talked a lot about is how our non-union employees have always given the shaft, for want of a better word, during the, you know, recession. We can't give them raises because, you know, but they're not in a bargaining union, and so they don't get raises, and they have fallen behind more and more and more. And I would like to point out that a lot of the non-union employees tend to be female. I think this is something to do with equity, and I think it's really important, and we have talked about this a huge amount, and maybe the next time when we have something that's going over multiple councils, we need to make a packet or something to answer questions that new council members rightly have, and that falls on us.
Thank you. Any comments from the mayor's, oh, sorry, councilmember Kottas.
Thank you. Being new to council, I think you're talking about me. But really, when I have a question, I reach out. I reach out to HR. I've had a lot of conversations about this, so it's something that if something is perplexing, I'm learning that it doesn't all come in right here every Monday night. It's something that you have to do during the course of the week, and so I will pop into the office and I will pose some questions and reach out to people if I'm not quite clear. And what I do like about this is you look at the wages right now, and they're all over the board, so let's level the playing field for everyone involved, and I think this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor's office.
Just two points, there is, I think, member Paul hit the nail on the head. I think this is the golden opportunity to help allay a lot of gender inequity that we see with pay, because this is redistributing everything and bringing people to market. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that was, that's important among other things. The other is the lump sum. You know, we have one individual who's maxed out and, you know, for no opportunity to receive any pay raises, where everyone else will keep creeping up, it's going to further compress that individual's position, and trust me, it's And trust me, it's a position that you don't want to keep compressing and compressing without having some level of being able to recognize the value of that person and the value of that role. That role is critical to this city. And, you know, it's no fault to the individual, anyone for that matter, but for, no fault to that individual for being maxed at the end of that person's pay grade to where he's sitting, but that's what it is. And, you know, that's really all I have to say about the lump sum payout. I think that's the right way to go in terms of pay equity and fairness for our city employees. I too feel this is a great step in the right direction when it comes to just pay equity with our non-union personnel. They bust their tails out there on a daily basis, doing what they need to be doing. And this is one way, this isn't a reward. This is just one way to help get them to some level of pay equity that's comparable to market value in comparable cities across the state of Ohio. So that's all I really have to say about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor here for ordinance seventy-one sixteen. All those in favor of adopting ordinance seventy-one sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Ordinance seventy-four sixteen, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located at three twenty-nine East State Street and eleven Hudson Avenue, Lot six-six-zero, owned by J. Randall Wheaton, to allow a lot split introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance seventy-five sixteen, an ordinance granting a revocable license to John Mohler, time-woner capable for the placement of power supply cabinets on the city right-of-way. Again, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
We had some questions out to administration. Do you have?
And that was a law bridge, and last week I have not gotten, I didn't place anything in writing nor request it, but I do believe they have full rights to do this with permission.
So we'll still have one more reading?
Yes, and I'll get that. And she even did review the Ohio Municipal League or whatever Cities and Villages article that President Mizeley had spoken about, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ordinance eighty-one sixteen, an ordinance amending ordinance nine dash sixteen, authorizing improvements on Franklin Avenue, and this is project number three-zero-one, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Any comments? Ordinance eighty-two sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens, Inc., of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-lots fifteen and seventeen in the city of Athens. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance eighty-four sixteen, an ordinance amending ordinance eight dash fifteen to include redesign of the Stimson mural, and this is introduced by Councilmember Butler. I have no comments. Moving on to a resolution for first reading. This is resolution zero-nine dash sixteen. A resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by twenty-hundredths percent, point-two-zero percent per annum, beginning January first, twenty-seventeen, on the ballot at the next general election on November eighth, twenty-sixteen, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. Should I read the, bear with my eyes here. Whereas the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, has determined that pursuant to Section seven-one A to the Ohio Revised Code, the issue of increasing the city income tax from the current one-point-six-five percent to one-point-eight-five percent annually, effective January first, two thousand seventeen, shall be placed on the ballot at the next general election. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section one, the Board of Elections of Athens County, Ohio, is hereby directed to conduct an election at the next general election on November eighth, two thousand sixteen, on the issue of increasing the Athens City income tax by an additional twenty-hundredths percent, point-two-zero percent, to one-and-eighty-five-hundredths percent, one-point-eight-five percent, per annum, effective January one, two thousand seventeen. Section two, the Board of Elections of Athens County, Ohio, is hereby directed that the ballot of said election shall be in the following form. Shall the ordinance sixty-eight dash sixteen, providing for an increase in the levy on income from one-and-sixty-five-hundredths percent, one-point-six-five percent, by an additional twenty-hundredths percent, point-two-zero percent, to one-and-eighty-five-hundredths percent, one-point-eight-five percent, annually, effective January one, two thousand seventeen, for the purpose of providing funds for safety service, police and fire department, general municipal operations, maintenance, capital improvement, and transportation, be passed. Question. Section two, a certified copy of the proposed ordinance is hereby attached to this resolution and incorporated therein by reference. Section, I'm sorry, that was section three. Section four, the Clerk of Council is hereby directed to file this resolution and a certified copy of the ordinance attached herewith with the Athens County Board of Elections at least ninety days before Election Day described herein. So read for the first time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. I might need a clarification from the Clerk. This is just first reading. Do we need to?
It's fine.
Okay, so we'll have two more readings on this. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the resolution for first reading? Having seen, we are moving towards adjournment for the special session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adjourning and then moving into a committee meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are now moving into our Planning and Development Committee, in which I believe is chaired by Councilmember Fall.
Councilmember Reisner is going to be the chairperson for this particular?
Thank you for the honor.
Yes.
The agenda states here, West Union Street Enhancement Modifications. The mayor, before the special session began, passed out to all members of council, and I believe some members of the audience, a diagram of what looks to me, using my vast knowledge of geography, West Union Street. Is that true?
It is true.
Okay. Would you care to speak to this issue?
As all of council notes, BDT architecture, in conjunction with the city planner and the city engineer, there was a open forum, or at least a public gathering, to look at three different possible options for the affected area of West Union, which is between Court and Congress, to rethink that streetscape and keeping it one lane of traffic, one side of parking, and therefore creating a twenty-six-foot space essentially width-wise, gathering space down there. In reviewing a lot of the comments, the written comments, there were vocal, verbal comments that came up, but in terms of having something objective in writing in front of us, a lot of the comments, there's a lot of concern. I think council received a number of emails as well, as did my office. Received some emails, a fair number in support, I have to say, of any of the concepts or the whole idea of rethinking the design of West Union. But again, there was also concerns over the impact of the one lane of traffic and the one side of parking. We therefore re-engaged with BDT architecture to do a scaled-down version, which is what you now have in front of you. A scaled-down version of a broad sidewalk, which will have some enhanced amenities to the sidewalk itself, and rethinking the traffic flow to where we decided to go back to the concept that you have in front of you, the concept being two sides of parking, so parking both on the north and the south side of West Union, between Court and Congress, as well as two lanes of traffic. Again, that's eastbound traffic coming up through that corridor. But with that, something that the city engineer during the street tours has mentioned several times, is that our streets are very wide, and that we can go under, Ohio Department of Transportation, we can go with ten-foot, go with ten-foot wide lanes. I have asked the city engineer, as well as BDT, to re-scope this project with that in mind. And what has come up with what you see, and unfortunately, the public can't see it who's watching right now, but this creates an addition of four to six-foot of sidewalk depth on that north sidewalk, which is going to have to be repaired anyway, once the, once the construction is done, and those big concrete bobblers that are holding up the facade of Mr. Guy Phillips's properties and others down there. This would allow us to correct that. There's also some storm drain improvements that need to be done in this area. If we are going to push the sidewalk out seven, or six feet, four to six feet out, we will need to put storm drain through there. The city engineer has priced all these out, or come up with estimates on most of these to give you some sense, the new curb with demolition, new curb and, new curb and demolition, we're looking at an estimate of about fifteen thousand dollars with replacement sidewalk, repavement of the street would be about ten thousand dollars. Also, with the widening of the sidewalk, and this is kind of being looked at as a phased type of project, where we would put new lampposts along there, get rid of the concrete cobra-head lamps that are along that stretch of the street, so it'll improve the appearance down there through that by making that correction. Parking kiosk, bike racks, park benches, or benches of some type through there, planters with trees or plants going in there with this addition. This addition allows us to do a lot. I will throw this out as well. This is worth mentioning. If you look at your BDT sidewalk enhancement, what you have in front of you, if you count the parking spaces on the north side of the street, there are currently thirteen. This actually increases it to fifteen parking spaces, because one of the things that's also worth exploring with this design is that people, not everyone, but a lot of people are parked driving compact cars, smaller cars, so this allows for some compact parking along that stretch, which can bring us up to fifteen parking spaces, as opposed to thirteen, which existed before. So we're actually increasing parking spaces, as opposed to taking away. You see that the loading zones are still there. This, this is, and these are my words, but this is, this is fact, that this is a major compromise between option A, B, or option one, two, and three, which, again, I'm going to say this, and that is that there are a number of citizens, as well as property owners and business owners, who liked option one, two, and three. But I listen to everyone and feel that this is a suitable compromise to where we can still start to revision what we can do in our retail corridors in the Uptown area and rethink design. Something else that you'll see in your design before you is on the corner of Court and Union, but also, but primarily on the Union stretch at that intersection, there is a further bump out of two to three feet, which actually shortens the crosswalk distance between what is Follett's Books and Witz, which is the business on the other side. That's the, that's the corridor I'm talking about, or that's the crosswalk I'm talking about, which is a safety feature. It's shortening the distance in which crosswalk users, pedestrians, are walking across that particular section. It also will create a great space for parking, for bike racks, as well as the kiosk for not having to return parking meter heads to this part of the sidewalk, which will also enhance the visual aesthetics of this particular stretch of city sidewalk.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Questions from the committee?
I was, I was at the planning charrette, and I agree with the mayor that this is a major compromise. I had a lot of, people coming to me actually indicating that they thought reducing the amount of car interaction with pedestrians was a great move forward. I understand that that was maybe a step too far for some people in this whole thing because of, I guess it was an opportunity because it's all ripped up, but moving forward with it was just too quickly, maybe for some people. I think, though, that the charrette that we did, and the whole discussion that this started, helps to, to increase the idea that Uptown, we need to, to look at a new Uptown plan, which we have talked about with the Cid and some of the other planning processes that we are talking about on the city level. I think that encouraging the pedestrian friendliness and the bicycle friendliness is only going to help Uptown. I, I have less concern about parking, because I think that there's other options that we are starting to explore uptown about parking, and parking shouldn't be the huge issue and the stumbling block that seems we need to get past them. And so, starting with the compact and looking at less, shorter, thinner lanes, narrower, narrower lanes, which will also help with people speeding through the area. So I think that this is, I appreciate the compromises that you've made. You know, I think that it's a, I guess it was just too quick for a lot of people. Thank you.
I formally want to thank you for the compromise. I think listening to the way you explained it, Mayor, listening to everything that everyone said was, was really important. I think this will beautify the area. I think the storm, you all know how concerned I was about the storm drain, and improving that infrastructure underneath the street, which is consistent with our major improvement projects. We try to not only improve the top, but we improve what's below it. So I'm very appreciative, and I think that the money we spent to have the meeting and to have the other drawings gives the public ways to look and view other areas, maybe in the Uptown area. And I won't, remember Fall mentioned all those other things, so I won't mention them again. But I do appreciate the, listening to all facets. I do appreciate it.
Member Cogburn?
Thank you. I agree, this looks like it could be a good, happy medium with perhaps less impact to the Uptown area, but also less of a price tag, which I know some folks are concerned about. And I'm, of course, happy to see bike racks there on that corner, because I, I often tire of seeing bikes locked up to parking meters and trees, you know, leave the trees alone. Let's make that a bike rack that is Athens branded, as suggested by the Essence of Athens campaign. That could be our first uniquely Athens-branded bike rack in the city. So that's my last piece of suggestion. Thank you.
Member Costas?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm really enjoying this conversation. I'm really, I'm having, I think this is great that we're trying to think about the streets in a different, in a different way. And I want to say that when, you know, when we first started talking about this, I did, you know, I said, I want to see it done right, you know, that's the bottom line. I don't know if we're there yet, so that's, you know, and so, I mean, for me, I just had a couple of conversations with, well, with a friend I went to high school with. And so it's great that I was actually able to reconnect with this person after, after many, many years. But she, she went to school at MIT with a, she's, she got a graduate degree in urban planning, works in New York City. And, you know, for me, I don't see the bicycle friendliness of this, this current plan. You know, maybe this isn't going to be a street, it's only one block, maybe this isn't a place. a place that we need to have that. But effectively, when you go to what they call a road diet, because that's what this is, you're squeezing the lanes and getting a little bit more out to give to another modal, you know, user group on the street, it's usually done to reduce those speeds. I don't think we have that issue here. So I, I'm still, you know, I'm still open, I'm still want to hear more about it, but what I got from the, from the meeting was, can we study this? Is there a way that we can barricade this off, try this out? Can we try it out in a couple of other areas in Uptown to see how it works there and measure it? You know, those comments about traffic going through town, some of those were mine, because right now, and this was a term that I just learned today, was that Union, Court Street, all that area, you have two types of vehicles, two types of cars that are going through there. You have two traffic and you have through traffic. The two traffic is going to these businesses, the through is going through. My guess is, you know, and this is just based on some of my observations as I've been thinking about this, the majority of the traffic that's going through there is not going to the Uptown businesses, it's going somewhere else. Can we encourage it to go somewhere else, and then all of a sudden, we have a different slate to work with? You know, and so that's just, those are my thoughts at this point on it. I really, I think it's great that we're working towards something different, but I would love the chance to really, really study it.
I'd like to get to the council first.
Thank you.
Member McGee had his hand up first.
Sure.
I'll follow, thank you.
I would like to applaud the mayor on this one, and I don't give credit easily, as you may know.
I haven't noticed.
But I think you deserve credit, and I think the meeting, the public meeting you sponsored was great, and I think you responded in a great way. I really like the fact you have the bicycle racks there, I think that's absolutely needed, and I think that when we have the sidewalks enlarged like that, it'll, it will definitely bring something to Athens that's well-needed. So, again, I applaud you. Thank you.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge as well, too, that I think having a dialogue with the public is terribly important, instead of those of us that happen to be in positions to just wave a wand and make something happen. We all live in the community, and it's important to have that dialogue and to listen. We did, I received, as well as council received, many concerns from business owners that were fearful about potentially losing parking spaces. I don't necessarily agree with their thoughts or fears, but I'm hearing them, I listen to them, as did the mayor, obviously, in working up this new plan. So I think it's important that we're responding and listening to and looking at. I also like the bump out, shortening the distance for a crosswalk. We know that Athens Uptown is not disability-friendly, we know that it's not elderly-friendly, there's undulations, and the challenges with the brickwork, too, with the different stepping heights, and so this also makes, again, one more step in helping make traversing easier and pedestrian-friendly, and I applaud that for sure. One thing that I have, a comment I've heard from some citizens that use bicycles as a mode of transportation, is that we don't have enough covered parking for bicycles uptown, that that's something that I think would enhance or lead to a greater likelihood of cycling, is to know that when the weather is slightly inclement, that there's a place to put a bike, and know that it's not going to get rained on, or rain might not be forecast, a person can bike up in the morning, and then all of a sudden, an afternoon shower comes down, but if the bike is covered, then it helps make it more amenable to bike home. So those are some things that I've thought about and listened to from constituents and community members. So all in all, I think, again, this is a healthy compromise to appease some of the fears or concerns that people in the community have. Thank you.
Administration?
I certainly appreciate Member Costas', your concerns, your questions. I think that we should be studying a lot of the Uptown area. I think we have been studying, you know, West Union between Congress and Court for a year and a half, just because it's been squished down to one lane of traffic and one side of parking. And this is, like I said, is a major concession to bring this back in such a fashion, but I think exploring Court, exploring Carpenter, exploring, you know, Washington, Congress, you know, about exploring speeds and whatnot down through the other corridors, maybe traffic patterns, but time is of the essence with this particular project, and largely because of the storm sewer needs throughout this area, and what we're going to have to put in, in terms of infrastructure, as the reconstruction of some of these buildings, you know, they're building along as well, and I would like to keep pace with this project to where we are pacing with what happens with those buildings coming back online, because we're going to need to put infrastructure under the ground, as well as sidewalk on top. So this will be coming up Monday night for first reading, but we're likely to ask for suspension of the rules as we move forward on this, so that we can get this going, so we can get the infrastructure in the ground.
Member?
At Essence of Athens, we talked about a bike rack, but in other places in town, we've added some brickwork and other things, so I'm assuming that's just kind of part of the plan here?
It is, it's part of the plan, but it's phased. It's going to be, that will come, believe me, and I really appreciate President Protown, the covered, you know, bicycle parking area, you know, and fitting with Essence of Athens. I think that's all important. I think, you know, whatever the design, even the, you know, are we going to stamp things in the sidewalk? I mean, those are all things that'll come as we start getting ready to pour concrete or lay block or whatever we're doing in this particular, but I just want you guys to know this, it'll start coming out as fast in terms of council approval as we move forward, but it's to keep pace with the contractors attuned, who's doing a lot of the construction down that area, and we've been in touch with them in terms of the progress that's going on and what is needed on their end, as well as what we need to do, just stay in mind. I think we might have someone here tonight who might also want to speak to this particular project.
Would you care to speak?
I do, but have you guys finished?
Well, he's given his time.
Costas? I'm sorry.
Okay.
One point, just, please don't call this bicycle-friendly. I mean, you could, you could put the best bike rack in the world up on US 33, and I'll never access it, and the majority of people are not going to want to travel down West Union on a bicycle if the lanes are shrunk. And so, I mean, I understand that, I know where the bicycle is in the food chain, and it's cool if this, if this street is lost to that, but please, just do not call it bicycle-friendly.
Let me just interject as chair, and I usually don't jump into this. I don't know what bicycle-friendly means, I don't know your definition. I know what I think is bicycle-friendly, but evidently, it's not the same as yours, so please enlighten me.
Would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay. Bicycle-friendly basically would be a street that would be welcoming to all user groups. So, and so it'd be a multimodal street, so we're taking away from the cars and giving to the pedestrians. And really, in this case, maybe that's the best thing to do, because that's the multitude of user group that's interfacing with that street.
So North Congress is bicycle-friendly because there's a bicycle lane?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
And sidewalks and cars, so that covers everything.
And a certain percentage of the people are going to be comfortable using a bicycle lane.
Okay.
But if you, you know, usually when, you know, like the road diet is going to happen, oh, that's not going to, I take that back, they're looking at when they're doing the US 3350 redesign down there on East State Street, they're talking about going to, maybe looking at doing a road diet and adding bike lanes. The road diet would reduce the speed of traffic, and then adding bike lanes, that would encourage that user group to use that, to use that corridor. So if you, if you do a road bike, but you don't, you don't add an additional facility for that user group, it isn't my definition of a bicycle-friendly.
Okay. Membership?
So I biked and lived in areas where you go from having bike lanes when you get to the center city, I'm thinking Cambridge, England, where I biked for 12 months, and as you got into the center, what they call the center city, which is the medieval city, which in Athens, in some respects, is 200 years old, we're kind of that way, in my mind. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, there become physical situations that cannot be resolved, and the bikes merged with the traffic, and the cars had to deal with the bikes. And I know that Athens and sometimes in the US were not fully there, but, you know, we have the signs that say, "Share the street with whoever it is," and maybe that's where, again, we need to educate, because I think that putting a bike lane on every single place in this town would be a difficult thing to do, and I know, you know, as you kind of merge, and I think of our Uptown as that center city kind of concept, that, you know, everybody's coming together, and if there's a bike in front of me, I slow down, and they're part of the flow of traffic, and I just have to deal with that, you know, as somebody in a car. And that's just, you know, part of my road diet in my head, that I have to do. But, you know, as we can get as many lanes to our center city that allow for that traffic, I'm thinking of Congress, it had to end as it starts to go down the hill when it hit South Congress, they didn't have enough room to do that, but wherever we can improve that, and then you have those double, sometimes there's a car and a bike, they just have it painted differently to remind people that this is for bikes and cars, too. You know, I've seen that in cities as well.
A charrel.
What's it called?
A charrel.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So maybe we can do some things with painting and some things like that to remind people that bikes can be here in this lane, too, you know, as you come into our center city concept.
Correct, correct. I mean, I'm just looking at this right now, and people are saying bike-friendly, I'm like, mm, you know, things going off.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, point made.
Yes.
Mayor?
Just one last comment. I mean, I never said it was a bike-friendly street.
We'll get to you soon.
So just for the record, that's not something I had ever said about this new concept, and I'm also going to say, going to say that there is no bike lane in existence on this stretch of West Union. It stops at the top of the hill as you're coming up West Union up to what is South Congress and Richland Avenue. This does not, you know, could we paint charrel stripes on this particular stretch? Sure, why not? You know, I would be in favor of that, but it's, you know, the other, for me personally, the other alternative is, I believe it was Option 1, which had a bike lane on that, which was, again, one lane of traffic and one side of parking, but I just am adamant about this being the best compromise that there is in making this rule forward, but one more time, I never said that this was a bike-friendly road in concept.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a different point, that's all. But you can go, I'm sorry, if you would like to...
No, go ahead, get your point.
Okay. Man, it's, you know, I'm going to forget it. You know, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for a bike lane on every street, so that's not, that's not my position, and that's not where I'll ever come from. I don't, I don't believe that they, that they can fit everywhere, but if you widen the sidewalks and you narrow the lanes, where are the bikes going to end up?
In the street?
They're going to end up on the sidewalk.
They must be walked, man.
They, yes, but I mean, there's, there's people in all user groups, you know, no matter you drive a car or a bicycle or whatever, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to do what they want to do. And they might, they might receive a fine for that, but I'm just saying that this is, you know, this is, might be where you're encouraging some members of the bike population to go by going in this direction, and it's fine. I mean, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
There was, you know, FYI, you can't ride your bicycle in the Uptown area on the city sidewalks, just as a PSA.
Correct.
About 30 people, you can't do it, nor can you ride your skateboard, nor can you use a...
Hoverboard.
It's not a hoverboard, whatever, these electronic assistive devices to sit there and cruise around on the city sidewalks. You will be, you can be cited, and you can be ticketed for that. So thank you, Member Costas, for bringing that up, because that made for a great PSA segment.
And please let me apologize, I don't want this to devolve into anything else, so I'm done. Thank you.
From the audience?
Good evening, my name's Guy Phillips, I live at 171 Rock Congress Street, and I represent one of the buildings there. Last week, when we had the public meeting as to looking at all the different designs, my tenant, they're going to be doing a last round, they're very much in favor of the one that had the largest sidewalk in front of their space. I was, you know, from my standpoint, if you took the sidewalk, it took it all the way to the other, out of the street, and just left four feet for a bike lane, that would make me the most happy. I'm not suggesting that. The compromise here, I was just at a meeting with probably 40 different, 40 independent business people, and when we're independent business people, we can't agree on anything. But at this particular case, there was 40 people, and the vast majority was very supportive of the new plan. In fact, one person who was probably the most vocal opponent to the plan said, "This is fine, and this will be good." So we're falling all over ourselves congratulating the mayor for putting this together, but you guys are the ones that have to suffer the consequences of putting, suspending the rules. I know that's totally irritating, but in this particular case, I hope you can do it. We're doing everything we can do to speed the process on our building. It is going smoothly, believe it or not. Everything's working in play, going in place, so we're very supportive of the compromise, and I request that you guys go ahead and suspend the rules and pass it, and we will do our part. The tenant is very supportive of taking care of, being a good, cleaning the sidewalks, doing whatever it takes to make everybody really happy. So, again, thank you all.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're giving me sideline material. All right.
I just wanted to comment that recently, I appreciate you affording us this opportunity and adding this as a committee tonight, because the mayor and I will both be out of town next Monday when this comes up for first reading. So if you have any questions during the week, please reach out to us, and we'll respond.
We will both be at the International Town Gang Association representing the city of Athens. For projects like this.
Loyola, Chicago.
I do have one question concerning the storm water drains upgrades and so on. Anything else that's going to be put in down there, other than just storm water, sewer, gas, electronics, cable, will any of that type of infrastructure be affected or added?
I don't know, maybe, but, well, the City Engineer certainly knows what's down there and what needs to be improved, you know, what's old, that's typically what goes on, as you guys are all well aware, that when there's any project going on, he makes a thorough assessment of the age of what the infrastructure is underneath there. There is a possibility, because there will be some retrenching to put the curb in again, conduit for fiber optics doesn't have to go all that deep, and so that's a possibility that we could start a run, not a fiber optic, but the conduit to go down there, so that we know that we could bury fiber underground in that area, which, again, is an economic development enhancement tool, as you get sort of aware. If we can sit there and start getting fiber in more places throughout the city, and the businesses that are moving into some of these spaces realize, well, I can get high-speed broadband and fiber, peel off a couple pair to go to those businesses, that's a, that's a great tool in the toolbox for any city when it comes to economic development. So, Andy Stone, that all said, the City Engineer is well-aware of what's underground, and is tracking any replacements or enhancements that need to be made underneath this project, and the storm line is one of those. So that does need to be done.
Right. All right, if there's nothing further, the committee will adjourn.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned.